Everyone, please rise for your fight allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Bobby, roll call, please.
Just me, Andy Mary, Noel D., yeah, thought he was.
He's here, but come back.
Mary Newfeld, Danny Pyatt, Danielle Youska, JD Schrader, Jeannie Long, and Mike Holding.
Here. We do have a forum present, and also my understanding that Mr. Schrader and his wife have a new baby. Danielle, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so Ellie, okay, we congratulate them and understand why he's not going to be present tonight. And I believe, Mr. Mary, we're trying to get a hold of to be available via phone. He's traveling today. And Dr. Deep has arrived.
Hello, Sandy.
Hi, Andy, it's the board meeting. Will this work for you?
Uh, seems to be working.
Okay.
All righty, uh, we've already taken roll call, Andy, and applied, so you're covered. In the meantime, uh, let's move on to item two, the consent agenda. Be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the minutes of the October 23rd, 2018 meeting, October 30th, 2018 special meeting, November 13th, 2018 special meeting. Financial report for October 2018. Consideration of current bills, checks number 9352 through 9453, in the amount of $115,386.19, ACH is number 181900419 through 181900562, in the amount of $957,634.13, and one wire transfer in the amount of $20,751.87, for a total of $1,009,772.19.
Okay, motion from Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Long. Any questions or comments on any of the documents? You've all had a chance to view them.
Uh, in just an edit in the minutes, um, the one that says they amend the budget to include use of fund balance, it says motion by Mead, a second by, but it doesn't have when the second was by.
Okay, I have that in my notes from.
You move, and you'll make the question.
October 23rd, must be.
Yes.
All righty, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I will move on to item three, citizens' delegations. Did anybody sign in? Not that I can see. In that case, we will move forward to the student representative report now. I received an email earlier this week from Nathan indicating that he might be running a little bit late, but he did give me a report, so I'll read it off real quick, if you don't mind. Uh, first quarter of the academic year ended on November 2. On November 8, students had the opportunity to participate in and learn from a career fair held in high school. It was a wonderful opportunity for students to learn about various training and career opportunities in the local area. Some of the companies that attended this fair included Rex Nord, Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, Aspirus, and the United States Department of Agriculture. Students would like to express their thanks to the administration and all the companies that participated in this program, and we hope that this event will continue to be held and will grow. Uh, the junior class had a great opportunity, attended college fair at UW Marathon earlier this month. There were over 30 colleges and universities from around the nation that participated and gave us valuable information to help us make decisions about our future. Uh, students took part in the Alice Training Exercise a few weeks ago, which Principal Rogers announced a certain situation to which the students and teachers had to react to. This is a great chance for the students and staff to be prepared for a circumstance like this. Uh, the boys' basketball kicked off with their first game tonight here at Antigo High School against DC Everest, and this is the first year with the new head coach, Evan Flattery. On October 26, Mr. Blood took the drama club to see a professional performance at the Fox City Performing Arts Center. Mr. Blood also informed us that this year's AHS drama production will be Cinderella. Practices will begin in January. The AHS gymnastics team is participating in the scrimmage tonight. It's a great chance for the girls to learn. Also, tonight is the boys' varsity swim meet at the Aquatic Center versus Lakeland Union High School. And in addition, all the other sports activities tonight, the boys' hockey team is playing down in Stevens Point. Sounds like the kid's been busy. So, Nathan, wherever you are, thank you for your report. Yes, I know, he did indicate that he had a basketball game, so we thank you for getting that information to us.
Have we gotten another student?
Uh, no, only one this year, is what I understand. Uh, we'll move on to new business, the committee of the whole. Be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board through the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting on November 13, 2018.
Second.
Okay, motion from Ms. Long, second from Ms. Youska. Uh, once again, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes stuff. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, item B under new business, policies, second reading. And we have, uh, four policies that have, we've gone through. Any questions or additional comments, stuff? Um, actually, I think we'll start out, we'll be looking for a motion on this, please.
I move the board adopt the following policies. We've got students who divorced or separated parents, sale of school forest products, suspension expulsion. What is that other one? Administrative guidelines. Oh, all right.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Newfeld, second from Mr. Pyatt. Now, any questions or comments on the policies? I see two of them that we don't have the numbering on yet, because those have to be.
They go to production with Neola now, and then they will number them accordingly.
Good.
So, we can just let you know that assigned number when it's out there.
Okay. And the administrative guidelines was for the, uh, student, or the student?
That is 2430 is the, um, new club's policy. And actually, that, I put the language in there. The board adopted a policy that explains that the district administrator is assigned to, um, implement and, and regulate the administrative guidelines. So technically, that AG wouldn't have to go to the board for approval every time. Um, but that would be up to the board, whether they want to leave it at that or amend that policy as well.
Gotcha.
Is that clear?
That is.
Okay.
So, if you follow the language that appears right above those attachments, you know, if you're comfortable with that, you would, the language reads that I would have the authority to take necessary action just for administrative guidelines. Or, if you prefer, to go back to, um, each administrative guideline can come here as well. But, you know, I'm comfortable with this, if you are, and then we would continue bringing policy changes to you.
How's board feel about that?
So, is it only pertaining to this one policy or to all policies in general?
I'm sorry, say again.
Is this only pertaining to this policy or to all policies in the future that the administration will bring it up to the board for approval?
We will continue to bring you every policy that is up for revision. But what this means is that I would oversee the corresponding administrative guidelines.
Right.
And then I would tweak those to match the policies without bringing that companion piece to you.
Can we receive notice whenever those administrative guidelines are tweaked?
Sure.
Sure.
Like, and we can review or something, just attach those?
Sure.
Yeah.
And it can be just a procedural, um, language piece in an administrative guideline. We can just make you aware of that, but it's not something that technically needs approval from the board according to policy.
Thank you.
And Neola's good with that? I mean, we're not breaking any?
Right, he actually brought it to our attention.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments on the policies? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, policies are adopted, and will be added to our policy standing. All righty, going on to item six, board action, the budget calendar. Motion, please.
I move.
I move the board approve the 2018-2019 budget calendar as presented.
Second. Okay, motion for Ms. Mead, second from Mr. Pyatt. Actually, Tim's got a pretty good timeline laid out here. No issues. Anybody, any questions, comments?
So, the one you're looking at is 1920.
Correct.
So, that motion.
Oh.
Should read 1920.
On the budget calendar?
Yeah, it says 1819 on our copy here. It's actually 1920.
But it starts in 2018, so.
So, technically, is that titled 1819, Tim?
1920, it's, we're giving the order guidelines of how we're going to get to the 1920.
That's what you'll present next July?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right on the, um, attachment.
Okay, so the motion is that the board approve the 2019-2020 budget calendar as presented.
Yes.
Any questions on that, or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item E, the 2019-2020 school calendar.
I move the board approve the 2019-2020 school calendar.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Pyatt, second from Ms. Long. Any questions on this? We've gone over it in committee of the whole. And, uh, what other questions we had that particular night were answered?
Yep, and we're just going to work on getting it so we're not too years old.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item C, RVA contract. Motion, please.
The board approve the 2018-2019 RVA annual commitments agreements.
Second.
Motion from Mead, Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Youska. This is just reaffirming our commitment to stay in the RVA. Questions, comments? What is our general payments for this? This gentleman speaking, Tim.
We're, we're part of a consortium, so there, I think there's seven districts that are part of the RVA. And, and our fees vary based on, um, the number that we have in proportion to the other six schools. And then there's, um, they're also under the charter, so anybody in the state can attend there. Our fees, the last two years were between $125,000 and $150,000, or, I'm going to say roughly... Oh, Danny, I don't even want to say the number, I might get it wrong. I was thinking it was around 45.
That's what I'm thinking as well.
I can get that to Julie, and she can send it over, if you're interested. But that's general guidance.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item D, trip to Germany. Looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the trip to Germany for 16 students and two teachers, March 18th through 31st, 2018.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Youska, second by Ms. Long. All righty, Mr. Wanniger, I see you're sitting there in nervous anticipation of talking to this.
Um, no, I just, uh, just prepared a schedule and itinerary for you guys.
Cool.
Just take a look at it.
Can we come?
Most frequent question of the German teaching.
1996.
And anyone else who would like to move here? Quick backstory, um, I've been, I usually run, I've run this trip twice before, and I usually run it as a gap exchange trip, where we go and we stay with the family for a week, and they come here for a couple of weeks and stay with our families. And then we do a little bit of touring after that. I'm currently in the process of changing sister schools, um, the one that I inherited when I first got the job here. Um, and I'm hoping that that's going to be in place for the next trip in 2021. It wasn't in place in time for this trip, so in order to not snub out my upperclassman, I'm giving him a two-week touring trip. Instead, I'm going to leave on my own. I've been planning that since last June. I didn't realize that, um, this needed to be passed by the board, so otherwise I would have done that. So, 14-day touring trip starting on March 18th of 2018, going to March 31st. We're going to utilize that long spring break that we have now and take the, don't get caught for the trip. Uh, includes, uh, all those different cities you see on there, Berlin, Montreux Castle, Marburg, Rothenburg, and Munich, mentioned. The cost to the students is roughly, hers, $2,800, and that covers all 14 days, all planes, trains, automobiles, breakfast, and dinner. The students, uh, fund their own lunch or snacks during the day, we're usually running during the day, so. But other than that, it covers everything else.
How are they raising that money?
Um, I have, right now, well, right now, I'm running an advent calendar fundraiser. They can, they can sell calendars throughout the month of November 4. Um, I just started that one this last year, so I'm still trying to get it to grow a little bit and get more calendars sold. I used to do a fundraiser through Chip Shop, the Spanish club actually headed and ran. And they have since stopped doing that contract, or doing that fundraiser since last year, so I kind of stopped doing it as well. I'm looking to jump back on that one for next year. The kids this year, that are going on this year's trip, haven't had a ton of chance to fundraise. The kids that won on my last one did have quite a bit of chance to fundraise. I had one student that fundraised $800 for it, um, over a course of two years that he started fundraising for it. So, I'm looking to get the Chip Shop fundraiser back, that's like a magazine, kind of a Christmas gift wrap fundraiser, and then along with the advent kind of fundraiser, hoping that that can give them enough to make a dent in it, so.
Do you still do the candy bars and stuff like that?
No, I haven't done the candy bars. When I first got here, I was under the assumption that somebody else did the Sarujis candy bars, so I'm not sure if that's still true or not.
We didn't do, we didn't do Sarujis, but we did, I remember having like Reese's Pieces and, I mean, I made a boatload of money.
It was a box with the swirled candy in it.
Yeah, and I made a lot of my money through that and selling Christmas wreaths, just for food for thought.
Yeah, and I'm always looking to up that. Uh, one comment on that price, that is a lot more than what the normal trip costs, because the gap trip includes staying with close families. And that, like, knocks the price way down, way, way down. Um, the 14-day touring trip is staying and paying for food at every hotel and every dinner. So, when I get the gap trip, trip back, that will, that price will come back down. I think the last trip costs...
It was roughly $1,700, $1,800?
Yeah, I thought it was even a little bit more than that by the time I got done with it, but like, right around there somewhere. So, it's, it's not always going to be close to $3,000, but.
I just want you to know, Alar's a little jealous of this. She and I talked about it last weekend, this trip going.
Yeah, I was supposed to take Danny's daughter, Alar, last time, and she had some medical issues right before we left. So, she was not allowed to go on the trip, but she's still in contact with her.
Absolutely.
With her exchange shoe, so.
Do you still take parent chaperones, or no?
Um, I don't, I haven't.
JD asked a couple months ago. Thought he was asking for the German club trip, and it turned out to be gymnastics.
Uh, first reason I haven't taken parent chaperones is because normally it's a gap trip, and it's normally it's a student exchange where you stay in a close family's house, so that kind of negates that. Uh, second reason, just a personal reason, I just kind of like the trip to be an independent experience for the student. Um, not, nothing against parents or anything, but I just feel like it's kind of liberating for high school students. That's how I felt when I went on the trip when I was a student.
Sometimes it's almost harder to take parents.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll report numbers. Yeah.
Parents are probably harder to keep track of than students.
Yes, so, it's kind of what I have.
Well, and the crew's a lot smaller than it was, you know?
Yeah.
That makes a difference.
All right.
Sorry.
Why, any questions, somebody? All right, good, thank you. Background information, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the trip, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, you're approved.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Thank you.
Item E, uh, 2019 city mannequin ball field agreement. Looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the 2019 high school ball field agreement as presented.
Second. Okay, motion from Ms. Newfeld, second from Mr. Pyatt. Uh, you've all probably had an opportunity to review the document. I'm just curious on one thing, one question I had, I noticed this year they were taking out Saratoga, both ballparks and North Lyra. Is it just that we don't have enough teams to use them, or the city doesn't want us to use them?
My understanding is that they must have, I don't know, J2, or I don't know the details of it, but they haven't used those ball fields in Rothenburg years.
So, this is being basically taken out at our request, not the city's?
Yeah, and to the point that Danny gave me an email this morning, um, the fee is, they were, the, the city was telling us they were going to raise the fee. And, um, Tom took a look at it and talked with Matt Moran, and they, they just reviewed the number of ball diings that's required. And the city said that if they pull those ball diings out, they keep the fee as it was last year.
Good. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate that.
No, because it's as presented.
As presented, yep. Anybody else have any questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, item F, new hires. Looking for motion.
I move the board to accept the following new hire, Erin Wick, 18 payroll, beginning November 12, 2018.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Pyatt, second from Ms. Youska. Um, any questions on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Uh, item G, resignations.
I move the board accept the resignation of Celeste Regch, Special Education Instructional Assistant, effective November 19, 2018. And thank her for her.
Motion for Mr. Pyatt, second for Ms. Long. Yeah, can we, uh, throw that out there?
Celeste was really good at her field.
Yes, she was.
She was an absolutely great IA for the high school. She's done a great job. Oh, there she is. Hate to see her go.
I agree.
Which, whatever path she has now chosen to go down, we hope that she's as successful as she was here.
Yes.
So, that being said, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, we accept the resignation. Item H, uh, donations.
Uh, I make a motion that we accept the following donations for November. Okay, Forest Building Project, John Nurene, netting $100 for the Nabokin School Forest Building Project. Community Health Foundation, $9,174.30 for the Healthy Kids, Bright Kids, Korean. Carl and Barb.
Mackewell.
Mackewell. $200 for the Nabokin School Forest Building Project. Bonnie Krupsek, $200 for Special Olympics. Christina Menusos, $100 for Special Olympics. American Legion Post Number Three, Sparks, Dornberg, $200 for Special Olympics. Southside Tire, $250 for Boys Soccer, Crispisnik, $250 also for Boys Soccer, co-managed credit. $450 for Boys Soccer, New Townies, and Priti, $200 for Angel Middle School, acquired, and a total of $12,124.39 in donations.
Did I hear?
Yeah, Todd and Linda.
What, Todd and Linda Hendrickson, they're not?
Oh, so they should have been here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Todd and Linda Hendrickson, $1,000 for Nabokin School Forest Project.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second, do we have a second? Motion by Ms. Mead, second by Mr. Pyatt. Once again, our community is stepping up and giving us these wonderful donations to help us out. And we appreciate each and every one of them, and, uh, for all the different activities, and there are many. Any questions, comments on those donations?
Appreciate it.
Very much.
Yeah, thank you.
That being said, all those in favor accepting donations, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, and with our gratitude to all those who have donated. Appreciate it very, very much. And that concludes the portion of the board action session. So, at this juncture, we would be looking for a motion to go into closed session in consideration to, during the closed session pursuant to section 198.85 per MG of the Wisconsin State Statutes, conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is running oral and written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to be involved, specifically the sale of the Mattoon School Building. I have a motion from Ms. Youska, second from Mr. Pyatt. Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Noel D.
Yes.
Mary Newfeld.
Yes.
Danny Pyatt.
Yes.
Danielle Youska.
Yes.
Jeannie Long.
Yes.
Just Kame.
Yes.
And Mike Holding.
Yes. Okay, we are officially in closed session. Uh, we are back in open session, and, uh, at this time, we would be looking for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion that we reject, um, the three bids that have been provided today to this board for the sale of the property at the former Mattoon School.
Second, please. Okay, we have motion from Dr. Deep, second from Mr. Pyatt, to reject the three bids for the Mattoon School property. Uh, let's do a roll call vote. Uh, let's do a roll call vote on it, Bobby.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Janie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
Mary Neufeld?
Yes.
And Mike Boldy?
Yes. Can I vote over the whole? Alright, then we also, subsequent to that, be looking for another motion.
I'd also like to make a motion that this board, uh, give the authority to our attorney to negotiate with the Village of Mattoon, um, for the sale of the property to the Village of Mattoon, uh, per instructions that were provided to our attorney.
Oh, second.
Okay. We have a motion from Dr. Deep, second from Ms. Long. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, Bobby, let's do a roll call one more time, please.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Youska?
Yes.
Janie Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
Mary Neufeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt? Mike Boldy?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Very good. Uh, that concludes the business for this evening, so we would be looking for a motion to a roll call. Motion from Mr. Pyatt, second from Ms. Long, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are good.